Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, being called to order at 6:01 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please take your call?
Here.
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 Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Appreciate it. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask our Treasurer, Lisa Exclay, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Treasurer. Next up on the agenda is Agenda Approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the regular meeting of July 12th, 2022, as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next up on the agenda is Approval of the Minutes.
David?
Go ahead.
I recommend that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of June 28th, 22, as outlined in 4A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next up on the agenda is recommended, I'm sorry, item 4B.
It's the same thing.
It's a different minutes for regular meeting.
Okay, I'll do it. Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of June 28th, 2022, as outlined in 4B.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Muscat. Any second on that?
I second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next up on the agenda is Public Hearings, and comment on Agenda Items only. We'll go ahead and start with Zoom first, see if there's anybody on Zoom. You will have two minutes to speak on Agenda Items. Please state your name, city, and street name. I don't, do you see anybody? Okay, I don't see anybody on Zoom. So let's go ahead and go in the audience. Anybody in the audience have any comments? Go ahead, Treasurer. But are you speaking as a Treasurer, or?
As a Treasurer.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
The item I want to address with you, just for your consideration, is under item 8D.
Wait, I'm sorry, Madam Treasurer. You gotta come close to the microphone, because they're having a hard time hearing you. Sorry. No, because they can't record it.
Okay. But please, can we get it?
Yep, better.
All right. Again, this is item 8D. What I'm going to ask you of the council body is this is the purchase of the four-foot person right review of the person's vehicle from Wayne County. And the letter is well written, where it gives you the amount of the letter, just know what property. The only thing I'm going to ask you to please add, so the Treasurer can actually pay the warrant, is to add from section 8.9, requiring that the warrant be signed by the mayor, countersigned by either the comptroller or the city clerk, and specify, I think they already have on here where it specifies, from what general ledger is on there. So that means that requirement, so I'm just going to ask you to add that, and Treasurer to issue the warrant or the payment, so that way we're complying with the Charter, please.
Okay.
We're just adding that, maybe.
Okay, you said required the warrant be signed by the mayor, and who was, what was the rest of it?
Either the comptroller or clerk, and I would recommend that for motions moving forward, because we need to have the mayor's signatures required, and my signature, Treasurer is required on all warrants. But it's going to be either the clerk or the comptroller, either or, right? One or the other. And I think it's important, because right now, our interim comptroller is not approved by the council body, and Council Chair, you and I talked about that, we'll bring that forward to the honorable body on July 26th, so the council can make that decision. Because I think it's important to have both your clerk and your comptroller on the signer cards, because you never know who's available of those two. I know Madam Clerk has a lot going on with elections, so it would be respectful of that. And again, it's a comptroller on, though interim, and I did research this, it is not provided for in the Charter, that because she's interim, she cannot be a signer. So there's nowhere in the Charter that it specifies that, that that may have to be a part of this.
Council Chair.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilor.
I think we did this with our previous interim, interim.
No, he was not out there. Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
I think we, I think we did approve it. I'm, I'm pretty sure we approved that our last comptroller, that was interim, to be able to sign it, David, I believe.
Dave Sabuda.
Dave Sabuda, if I, if I may be, if I'm correct. And I'd like to get Corporation Counsel's take on this, if we have to go through all of this.
You mean in terms of this additional language being included? Some of it could be included in terms of who it is that ends up being given the responsibility, whether it's the comptroller or the clerk. The Charter says either, if I recall correctly. And I think it would be one of those things where it probably would make more sense for it, in the long run, to end up being comptroller, because they're the person who ends up actually dealing with the fine.
Can we, can we put the, the interim comptroller on as a signee, or not?
No, there is nothing in the city Charter that says someone is interim. It says that they're a department, that the mayor has appointed the person, whether or not the understanding is that she is interim, she is still, at least for the moment, the comptroller. So she can end up actually doing things, even if she's considered interim, because we're not sure if she's going to stay on. Just like the Charter, just like the Treasurer, when John Riley was being interim, he was able to handle.
So, so when, so are we going to be able, or it's going to come forward that we approve her to be a signee at any time?
Yes, July, may I, may I, July 26th, your next council meeting?
Yeah, I was going to say, so.
We talked about that. Yes.
So Treasurer came to me with this, and I didn't want to add something like this on at the last second, and have us all bouncing around and trying to figure out what we want to do. So I said to her, I'll bounce that to the next meeting. This way, all council members will have an opportunity to be able to research it, speak with council, talk with people that are involved, and then make a decision.
So we don't actually have to do what?
If we don't do what the Treasurer is saying right now, would be the same way we've been doing it all along anyways.
Okay, so then, but then on July 26th, we can hash this out?
That's what I think would be the best thing to do.
That's fine.
So July, Honorable Councilmember, July 26th, I will have that, because it comes from the Treasurer's office, to add the comptroller as a signer, along with Madam Clerk, the mayor, and myself. You have to have the mayor and the Treasurer, and again, it's the clerk or the comptroller.
Okay.
And as, yeah, so right now, we don't have that in place with the comptroller, and it has put, I'm not to speak for Madam Clerk, but I think it's put a lot on you. And I, I think it would be wise to have an option.
Okay?
Because you're not always going to have everybody available.
Okay.
Okay? But I'm just asking for tonight, for that item, if you would add that, please.
So, Corporation Counsel, just to make sure for tonight, is it okay to have it signed, added on there like that, with that verbiage? Even though we haven't really discussed it?
Yes, it's, it's fine. Basically, pair it some of the language that's in the Charter.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not a problem in terms of continuing. It's more of an administrative issue between the clerk's office, and the comptroller's office, and the Treasurer's office. It's more of a practical issue than a legal issue, as long as you can include that language.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. And that's exactly where it came from, is from the Charter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else has public comments on Agenda Items?
Hello.
Oh, hello.
Rachel, Rachel LaPointe. I was hiding back there, behind Madam Treasurer. On the same topic, 8D, the purchase.
If I may interrupt you for a sec.
Sorry. Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights.
I know, I know who you guys are, yeah. Thank you.
Yes. It's been a day. I had a question. One of the properties that was selected has the asterisk, and it says that there was a claim, and it would go for the higher, whether it's the fair market value or the bidding price. If we purchase it, does that apply to us as well, or would that only have applied?
Which, which property?
The last one on the list, the Culver Street one?
Uh, Culver, 5661 Culver?
Yes.
Okay, what about it?
So it says at the bottom, "A parcel with an asterisk indicates that a claim for surplus proceeds was filed, and therefore, it will be sold for the higher of the minimum bid or fair market value," and that's listed as $72,000. So I don't know if that would apply to us, or if that would have just gone on to, if other people had been bidding on it.
Okay. Corporation Counselor, you want to answer that?
Yeah, my, my impression would be that it, it depends on what ends up happening with respect to that claim. We may end up having to pay the minimum bid, we may end up having to pay the, an additional price based on that claim. So the motion should reflect that, and that may make it something that we may or may not be interested in, frankly.
Okay. Go ahead.
In addition, I'd like to point out that on our notes here, it says 5661 Culver, and the amount of 6,33.97. There's a number missing.
Yeah. Type it.
And then just one other question on that, which, if you have a discussion about this, it could be addressed then. But I was just wondering, as a resident, how the properties are selected, what is the criteria, what's the plan for the properties? And I did notice that several of the ones that seem to be empty lots are in the South End, and to me, that seems like it could be an option to purchase these lots for a very, very low price, and turn them into little retention ponds, basins, if they are close to the creek. But without knowing the exact location, I don't know how to read all the lot stuff. So, but that was just a thought that I had when I saw this on the agenda, you know, and flooding's always on our mind in the South End. So, yeah, that's, that's it. Thank you.
If it spits outside, you're all worried. I am.
Anybody else in person that needs to speak on Agenda Items? All right, seeing no other ones, we'll go ahead and go to the next section of our agenda, and that's Item 6, Fund Transfers and Current Claims. Council Chair. Councilman Tom Wenzel, go ahead.
I recommend that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve current claims 6-1 through 651, as submitted.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Wenzel. Is there any second on that?
I second.
Okay, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Motion made by Councilman Wenzel, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on agenda is the reports from the mayor. Item 8A, Budget Amendments, Hiring of a Full-Time Corporation Counsel.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the budget amendments to hire a full-time corporation counsel, and authorize the comptroller to create the new GL account, as needed, as outlined in 8A.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Muscat. Is there any second on that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Okay, I, I had some questions for the mayor. So I want to get a little bit of a better understanding of this. This is a hiring, and I know you and I have spoken about this before, your desire to have, although Gary Miyake has done, of course, a great job over the years, in my eight years of serving here, and very knowledgeable on city issues, but I know your desire sometimes, you know, it's been, it's been challenged for you as far as needing full-time attorney. So you want to fill us in a little bit on your end, where this has come from, if you don't mind?
So Mr. Miyake and I, you know, we discussed this. Mr. Miyake is not going anywhere. He's still going to be affiliated with the city. He's going to do, obviously, the prosecution. That's going to be main focus, and also, anything special cases that come through the city. So, and plus, Mr. Miyake is going to help us also with the transition. So he's going to be involved. He's not going anywhere.
Okay.
And, you know, I mean, obviously, his law firm has been very successful, you know. I know there was some issues in the past that we had, you know, before, before I was appointed, well, during my appointment, with, you know, we wanted to discuss some of these issues, but his, his law firm, he concentrated on his law firm at the time, and it's doing very well, and he's got a lot of, lot of cases going. So we do need a full-time attorney, and Mr. Miyake is going to help us with the transition, and also, as I mentioned, with some of the special cases that come through us.
So with this new attorney, which, do we know who it is as of yet, or is that still in the process?
Well, it's in process. We, we're waiting on a background check before it's announced.
Okay, so there's no specific person at this point?
No, we do have a person, but we're not going to announce it.
Right. So for right now, you're vying for the position first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to do the budget amendment first.
So with, with that position?
Council Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, at the next meeting, hopefully, if everything comes up positive, then we'll be putting that on agenda.
Sure. But either way, though, you're, you're vying for a particular position at a particular cause, so either way, if, if not that person, it could be another person.
Right.
So let's, so I'm not speaking in terms of the position specifically. So with fringe benefits, life insurance, hospital insurance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, you got a salary of $115,000 plus additional costs, so it comes out to $171,925. And of course, you got social security, pension, et cetera, which is another, well, which is a part of it, I'm sorry, it's $41,925. So with that being the case, what would happen, and if it's uncomfortable, let me, well, I don't mind if it's uncomfortable, but let's just say it's inappropriate, then let me know. So I'm discussing specifically salaries here. So how would they take into account the, not salaries, but the, the contract that we have already with Corporation Counselor? If I'm not mistaken, it's around 240, is that correct, Gary? Give or take?
You know, we don't have a specific contract amount, it's just based on services that are rendered. So I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the line item is. I'm normally not consulted, I'm sorry.
Okay, so my main concern is this. If we're paying out to a new, whoever the attorney happens to be, are we still paying an amount to you, or does that stop your pay in terms of municipal corporation, I'm sorry, municipal corporation counselor?
My understanding, if I may, Mayor?
Please.
Is that O'Reilly Rensilio would still do certain work, I would do all of the prosecution, and all the things related to prosecution, and the new person would do the work that he or she would be able to end up handling, and there would, there would probably still be a need to go to outside counsel for some of this work. I mean, there's just a lot of work that ends up being done by the city. So my understanding is, we would continue to end up getting paid, it would just be less, because this person would take on a number of the tasks, but there would still be a need for outside counsel. Clearly, there'd be too much work for one person in-house.
So is there intent to still have you on until you have that transition period? Because the way I'm thinking, no matter who it is, no matter how good they are, I mean, I don't know about, you know, municipal background, what have you, but no matter what, there's going to be that little transition period, will you still be on as Corporation Counsel? Maybe we could have Corporation Counsel A, and then Corporation Counsel B, until the next person, whoever it is, is up and running?
My impression, based on my conversations with the mayor and the chief of staff, would be, I would be appointed an Assistant Corp Counsel.
Okay.
And would be assigned to handle, which I already handled a lot of the prosecution, but I would be handling all of the prosecution, unless I delegated it off to someone else, and then I would be doing kind of like special projects, or helping the new corp counsel. And O'Reilly Rensilio would be handling things like zoning and planning, and helping out as well for the new corp counsel.
Okay. I, I do want to make a statement, and you'll be next, Councilman, in that I definitely see a need for this, and this is no reflection on you, Gary, because you've done a great job over the years consistently. But I, I look at cities, and it's just, you know, one of them is Dearborn, and I know at one point, and if I'm not mistaken, they had like eight, nine, 10, maybe even, I think it's even 11 attorneys at one point, as an example. And I recognize and realize that that's a bigger city, of course, but in our case, we never had somebody full-time, 24/7, doing only corporation counsel stuff, because in your case, you were also doing prosecution two days a week, and of course, you had your own firm that you were running. So I do see a need, most ideally for me, would have been you doing this full-time for us, but that's something, obviously, you guys would have discussed. Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Council Chair. The $171,0925 cost, I think it's a little misleading, like the Corporation Counsel just mentioned, that he would be retained as an assistant, so he'd be getting paid for this position, you know, in, in this, to do this work, along with these other firms, outside firms. So I got, it's not, I got a feeling it's not costing the city $171,000, but probably, you know, at least twice that much? I don't know, the numbers, because it's, I'm, I'm not disagreeing, we do, it sounds like we do need this, but I think these numbers, there's, there's more numbers involved than these numbers that were given.
And that's what I was saying, because there would still be, that's why I was asking, in terms of what the specific contract is with Gary specifically, because, and that's why I was asking, would we still be paying you, and under?
We don't have a.
Well, I know, he said there was no, right, but we'd still be paying hourly, that's what I'm trying, I was trying to determine.
Council Chair?
Well, let me just make sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you all set?
I was, I was going to ask Corporation Counsel, or the mayor, if, if Gary Miyake would be kept on as a salary person, or an hourly person, or it's part of his job that he's going to remain at prosecution? Is that going to be another part, assisting the Corporation Counsel, or?
Well, within Corporation Counsel, there's already the prosecutor, and a lot of the things that I do, and that other law firms do, are all considered to be part of Corporation Counsel. Even Labor Counsel, for example, Mr. McCula, is considered to be under the auspices of Corporation Counsel. So that's why some of it, in terms of your budget, as I understand it, if you include all those items, it comes out to about $400,000. All right? So Labor Counsel would continue, as far as I know, would, would end up being Mr. McCula. And then, a lot of things in terms of contracts, you know, things that basically, it's easier to do in-house. I mean, bankruptcies, contracts, a lot of things that we, that are done, would end up being done by Corp Counsel, plus, the new Corp Counsel would cover these meetings, and I would be doing prosecution, except if I was needed on certain things, or if the new Corp Counsel needed to speak to me about, you know, whatever it might be, because obviously, I've been Corp Counsel since June of 1999, and have represented the city all the two and a half years since 1988. So, you know, I can be there as a resource to the administration, to the council, to the new Corp Counsel, as needed, but I would be billing on an hourly basis, like I do now, and I would submit my, you know, my monthly bills, and O'Reilly Rensilio would be doing stuff, but probably less, I would be doing less, and the new Corp Counsel would be absorbing some of that work, you know, although I would, I would recommend, you know, people would need to be looking at, this new person would need to end up having support.
That's my next question, is, would we, this person required to have a secretary, assistance? Is that something that's figured in, or?
I, I don't know.
We haven't, I mean, we're just putting a budget for that, for a full-time attorney right now.
There won't be any plans to have a secretary, or anything like that, or assistance?
I don't know what's going to happen in the future, Councilman, but I, you know, right now, we're just trying to get a full-time attorney.
David?
Yes, we, one second. We all set?
Yeah, thanks.
Then, all right, would, how many of these attorneys would be collecting benefits?
There's nobody collects benefits.
Well, the insurance.
The full-time attorney will, because that's.
So just one?
Yes.
Not two or three?
Right.
Okay, that was a concern.
Yeah, all of us who are outside counsel do not get any employee benefits. We are all considered to be independent contractors, including me. We don't get any of the benefits, any of the fringe benefits, any of the life insurance, any, any of these things that are listed here for the new Corp Counsel, we don't get. So the new Corp Counsel would be getting a salary plus these, these benefits.
And, and we will have, I can tell you, Councilwoman, ourselves, a benefit, because there have been many times where, you know, sometimes we've needed something a little bit faster, but obviously, based on, not Gary's capability, because we know he's capable, but based on doing prosecution, and his own firm, and this. I don't know how he, I don't know how he does it, but it's a lot. But he did it for so many years, I couldn't do it, but he did it for so many years, but obviously, he was limited in terms of time that he could give to the mayor and the administration. Sometimes some things are time-sensitive, and I think in the long haul, this will save us money, in my personal opinion. And I know Councilman Ray Muscat felt the same way. Is there any other? Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Council Chair. You know, there's three council members missing here tonight. I'm sure they have some questions on this. I mean, I, I'd like some more questions answered about the total projected cost of this. I know it's got to cost more than that, because Mr. Miyake just stated, he said that right now, it's costing us like $400,000, roughly, to do all these jobs, and.
But to clarify, that wouldn't be $400,000 to him?
No, no, no.
Right.
For, to, to do everything, legal, legal department.
All right.
You're good. But, you know, I, I'd like to make a motion to send this to a study session, so we can get some more answers, and our council people get involved with this.
Council Chair?
Yes.
All we're doing is approving a budget amendment. It's hard to predict what's going to come tomorrow to the city, you know, we're just putting this in as, trying to do a budget amendment, to add a full-time attorney. Even if you have 10 study sessions, we still don't know what's going to come in a week, two weeks from now, through, for legal. So we do, we do need this, and, you know, I don't, I don't understand why they would go into a study session. We do this to get a full-time attorney.
Council Chair, to do a budget amendment, that would mean that there's, there's no money in that budget to cover this? And I'm not an expert on it, but I believe there is money in the budget to cover this? Is this something that we need a budget?
Well, there is, there's a general fund.
Yeah, so do we need a budget amendment?
Budget amendment means you're allocating now, 100, in this case, $171,000 total, you're switching it from one account to another, allocating it towards this, specifically, the hiring of a new full-time attorney, which, again, in my opinion, we need a full-time attorney, in my opinion, period. And again, Dearborn, as an example, has 10 or 11, and you might say, well, it's a bigger city, but it's 20, 25, 30,000 more residents, you know, it's.
And we're growing.
And we're growing.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. I just, you know, I, I just think that we've been doing it really well, with no problems. And now we're putting another person on the payroll.
So I'll answer that.
And then probably more, more people, support staff. I mean, I'm not against, you know, I'm not against giving people benefits, and fringe, fringe benefits, I mean.
Council Chair?
I get, I get this much fringe benefits, right there, that's what I get, for, for your city councilman. But not that I'm against anyone getting any fringe benefits, but, you know, I, I just got a feeling that there's going to be more support staff added on to this, after this is approved.
Well, so when you hire, so when you hire a particular person, whoever this person Well, so when you hire, so when you hire a particular person, whoever this person would eventually be, you'd be hiring them, and then obviously, they'd have obviously some support staff. That's, that's, right now, we're just talking about the specific one attorney. I tell you myself, personally, speaking for myself as a council chair, and this is no reflection of capability or effort on, on behalf of our Corporation Council, Gary Miyaki, but there is delays in getting things done, not because he's delaying it, but because he's juggling three huge balls with, you know, the prosecution, his own firm, and this. So I, I definitely see the need for a full-time attorney, in my personal opinion.
I agree, I agree with you on that, I've just said, we gotta be more transparent and give, this is what our, this is what our plan is. You know, you can't just say, this is our plan for this guy now, and things might change next week. This is the plan for this department for the next year, we're gonna hire all these people. I mean, let's, let's be real, if it's not, then you say that this is the only guy we're gonna hire for this. If not, say, while we plan, we probably will be hiring more people in this department. Let's just get all the, just get all the facts in front of us.
Okay.
I, I believe we have budget for legal services, and that would be part of that budget for the legal services. So, you know, we can closely monitor the, that line amount as we go forward, because it's already budgeted for that. I mean, if we went through a whole budget season, and we, we learn all that stuff over the years, that that money's already budgeted for legal services. So, it's there, and we can monitor it a, as a council. And we can approve or disapprove later on down the road, what we need to do.
Yeah, but that, Councilor Chair, I mean, that, that never happens. What happens is, is, you know what, I got this situation, and we're gonna need support people, otherwise, this, this new hire is not gonna be, is gonna be useless to us, or not as efficient as we thought.
That comes out of that budget.
Is there money in that budget?
Yes.
How much is in that budget?
Councilor Chair.
So, wait one second. So let's, let's do this first, let's let Mariana speak first, and then we'll get you, Ray, speak.
I'm done saying what I need to say, I think this is long.
There's too many, let me try to keep track of them. So start with the ladies first.
Thank you, Mariana Hernandez, Chief of Staff, City of Dearborn Heights. I just pulled the budget, so that I could help answer your question. So we do have legal services budgeted. The total department amount is 342,000. Last year, we only spent 231,000, 231 out of it, as of the moment when we did the budget. So, we're asking to add an additional position for that. So it would be the 342, plus the 170-something with the fringes.
Correct.
So that would be your total department budget, and the idea is to hopefully not go outside of what that amount is going to be.
That would bring us over. That'd be 300, that'd be, we spent 231, and you add 171 on to that, that'd be 400,000.
So we're asking for an additional, so again, it's 342, plus the 170,000 that you're, we're requesting right now.
But we didn't spend the entire, we didn't spend the entire 340.
Forty-two.
Forty-two thousand, we only, we spent less, quite a bit less.
And now we'll be spending more, we'll spend 60,000.
Well, but we didn't spend the entire budget. We did not spend the entire 341, we spent 230,000 dollars. So, I mean, there was another hundred thousand dollars right there that we did not spend.
So, okay, I'm sorry, no, just to clarify, so last year, we had budgeted for 300,000. Out of those 300,000, at the time of the budget approval, we had only spent 231,000. This year's budget, the one that we just started, we budgeted for 342,000.
Correct, that's what I'm, I'm going off what we just budgeted, and last year, we didn't even come close to that.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's the point I'm trying to make, I, you know, I remember going through all of this for weeks on time with, with our budget, and we keep asking it over and over again.
That's it, that's all I wanted to add, I hope that helps.
Thank you. Mayor, then Councilman Breyer.
All right, I, I've almost forgotten, you go first.
Somebody has a question.
But.
I think, I'm trying to remember what my question was with all the back and forth here. I believe I wanted to, to ask, do we have final approval of this said person, before any of this happens?
No.
Okay, that was my question.
Well, but there's tools in background, so it's not final approval.
Well, yeah, the, the way that this would have to be done, is that the person would have to be appointed by the mayor, subject to your confirmation. So that would still end up needing to be done, and we would potentially have to do something with the motions a little different, because the idea would be that I would serve until this person got appointed, and then they would need to appoint me as an Assistant Corp Counsel at the same time, so, kind of unusual, but we could work out the details, but ultimately, you have to concur in the appointment.
Okay. Councilman Wenzel, are you all set?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Muscat?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
I was just hoping that that would alleviate, Tom, we'd have more people involved in the final process.
I'm just confused, you know, on the numbers, I'm just, I just.
But, but I, at this point, the administrative part is not a part of this. Right now, we're just approving Corporation Council only. Okay, so, motion 8A, budget amendments, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Yes.
Just one more thing, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm gonna vote no on this, but I'm sure it's probably gonna pass, but I just wanted, you know, I wanted something in front of me, that this department, we're creating basically a new department, basically, right, you know, you know, right?
It's already legal, it's not a full department, we're just having a full-time person.
A full-time person, he's gonna have an office, right, you know, but anyway, we're creating something new, and, you know, it's, there's gonna be, you know, furniture, or maybe not, there should be like this thing, you know, spelled out exactly what this thing's gonna do, what is, what's he gonna do exactly for us? You know, what, what, what kind of, what kind of support team he's gonna need? Is he gonna need a vehicle, you know? We, we've been giving vehicles away to this, to people in the city like crazy lately, and that's, I, I don't know, are we giving, this person gonna get a car?
Okay.
Do you know that or not?
So, but, but it's not as relevant, because we're not approving a car. So when that, so let's, first of all, I, I don't foresee that, and I can tell you right now, I'd say no, but that's a whole different conversation.
It's not our choice, though.
But let's, but let's, let's, let's use that scenario, let's say there's a car that's, that's asked for. It'd be asked for on an agenda item, at a different council meeting, then all of us as a body would have to approve it or deny it.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, because with this salary of 115, there's no car.
There's cars gonna be given to employees without council approval.
Okay, we're not talking about directors, we're not talking about directors, I'm talking about for this.
I'm just saying, a council, okay.
But they're under contract for a car.
Okay. But we're going off subject to this.
Okay.
Right now, what we're voting on is, is it okay for the city administration to hire an attorney for $115,000 salary, a full-time attorney in the city? So again, I'll state it again, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, motion 8A, budget amendment. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you take a roll call, please?
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breyer?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
And Councilman Wenzel?
No.
Motion carries three to one.
Okay, motion carried, you know, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item 8B, Annapolis High School Annual Homecoming Parade.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Wenzel.
Uh, 8B, let's see, where is it at here on my, little packet there?
8B.
Eight, yeah, I know, I'm looking for it here, I got it here. Anyway, okay, I recommend, I make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council grant permission for the Annapolis High School, my alma mater, to hold their annual homecoming parade on Friday, September 30th, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Police Chief Hart and Fire Chief Brogan have approved the route, and will provide any services they may require, as outlined in 8B.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Wenzel, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Is there any discussion on that? Do we get a go, what are we, this, go Cougars, where do we go what?
Go Cougars, yeah.
Cougars? All right, so go Cougars. All right, with, with the go Cougars, with the motion, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Crestwood High School Annual Homecoming Parade. We'll give this one to Councilman Muscat, since he's from Crestwood.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council grant permission to Crestwood High School to hold the annual homecoming parade on Friday, October 7th, 2022, at 5:30 PM. Police Chief Hart and Fire Chief Brogan have approved the route, and will provide any services that may require, as outlined in 8C, and that is my alma mater.
And go what?
Go Chargers.
Go Chargers, all right. So motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by?
I second.
All right, Councilman Breyer, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 8D, purchase and payment of properties from Wayne County Tax Foreclosure List, list, I'm sorry. Councilor Chair? Councilman Muscat?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize a purchase and payment of 8286 Lenore in the amount of $23,360.13, 8402 Nightingale in the amount of $11,294.79, 6723 Kinmore in the amount of $14,922.79, 5449 Party in the amount of $18,640.97, and 5661 Culver in the amount of $6,033.97 from the Wayne County Tax Foreclosure List. In addition, authorize the, in addition, authorize the, the mayor and the clerk to sign the warrants, and have the treasurer issue the payment for city-owned properties, account number 101-200-949.00. And again, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the paperwork associated with the purchase of the, of the homes on behalf of the city, as outlined in 8D, and have the treasurer do the warrant.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair?
Yes, Councilman, go ahead.
Are these the properties, or are these homes?
So, there, there was in the list that we were giving, given, I'm sorry, given. So let me just give a general synopsis to those in the audience that are not familiar with this. So when a property goes foreclosure, the one that has the first right of refusal is the state, at the state level. The state gets the property first. When the state does not take that, then it goes, the second person that's the right of refusal would be the city. So basically, we take these properties at that cost, okay? Then we determine what we're gonna do with them. But in those, in that list that we received, which I'm doing a quick count here, roughly, I don't know, about 12 properties altogether, in it is some vacant lots that were included. So if we do not take them, they automatically go to the third party that has a right of refusal, which is the county, goes to the county next, and eventually, they'll go to foreclosure, and obviously, somebody will pick them up. But what we had focus on as a city with administration is to take these properties back first, purchase them first, before it gets to the county, because once it gets to the county, now you've got people from all over the world bidding on it, and who knows what's gonna happen with these properties. When we purchase them at these, quite a bit discounted rate, but keep in mind, a lot of these properties need a lot of work, too, we can work through a process to help pick what we feel would be better vendors to be able to take care of these properties, and make sure they follow a lot of rules and regulations that we want followed, and make sure that there's nice properties that are fixed up, better tax base, et cetera, et cetera. That's the summary of it. But we are not, at this point, picking who will be taking over which properties, but the vacant lots, if we took those, we'd be able to do very little with. Not to mention, I do wanna point out, as a Realtor, on a lot of these vacant lot prices, they're not like an unbelievable deal for us to take them over.
That's, that was my next question, is, are these gonna be put into that program that we have for?
CAP program?
CAP program, yeah, right. Yes, Corporation Council, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm expecting to end up having an RFP package. Again, there were two different things we were looking at, but we'll do the RFP package, hopefully, on the next agenda for these in general, but at least start getting people to put in a proposal to end up taking care of these properties.
Sure, so for those in the audience, just to describe it a little bit, what happens during those types of meetings? We come in, there's two, three, four, five, 10, whatever it is, number of people that are bidding for these properties. Sometimes they take them as a package, sometimes we make a decision to give them increments, three each, or whatever. We make a decision, say at our discretion, and then they take them over, fix them up, and then sell them with some criteria as to how they can sell them, that we usually put together. Of course, following legalese. Okay, any other questions on this? All right, hearing none, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, on item 8D. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. And by the way, side note, I think it's a great idea for us to control this, so good job, Mayor. Next item on the agenda is item 9A.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
Uh, this is from our pending list here. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve a moratorium on used car lots in the City of Dearborn Heights, effective Wednesday, July 13th, 2022, for a period of 180 days, as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Wenzel. So just a little brief description on this, this, this moratorium has been in place for quite a while. Right now, I think roughly about two years, where there was a limit as to the number of used car lots that can be put on, or put in in the city. And all we're doing here is we're extending it for another 180 days, because there are some areas where this could be drastically affected, most specifically Van Born, and the City of Dearborn Heights and the City of Taylor are working together right now on improving that street through landscaping, lighting, asphalt, et cetera, et cetera. And the mayor's putting tons of meaning into this, and that's why we wanna keep this thing on hold, until we figure out what we're doing there, and then, of course, through the rest of the city. Any other discussions on that?
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Wenzel.
Where did this come from? I, I mean, I, you just explained it, I mean, I've been, I've been looking for something like this. I actually called for a study session a couple of meetings or so ago. I wanted, what I, I like this, and is it because something's running out now, is it, the time ran out?
It ran out already.
It ran out, okay, it ran out.
So, what we did here is we've extended it.
Okay.
And if we decide as a body, or as a corporation, as a council chair, that we wanna do a study session, we can. Keep in mind, when we do a moratorium, we could start at July 13th, and decide at the next meeting that we're gonna end it now. That's at our discretion. But at least at this point now, when we vote on this, if this gets voted in, what we've had in the past just continues.
Okay.
Until we decide as a body, what we wanna do with this, whether we wanna keep it, or not keep it, or amend it, or whatever.
Okay, you know, this, this kinda goes hand in hand, you know, obviously, it's ordinance, it's a big issue.
Correct.
And, uh, one of the things is ordinance violations, and, you know, there are, there are some used car lots in the City of Dearborn Heights that are phenomenal businesses. I mean, there's, you know, I think it's West Financial, up on Telegraph Row, beautiful, beautiful facility. But then you get some there, you go in there, and they got all the cars just jammed in there. And I think when, not only this, used car lot, but any business that comes up for license renewal, we should scrutinize these businesses a little, you know, not just ask if the water bill's paid. Let's say, you know, let's find out how many ordinance, how many violations have they had? Is this something, an ongoing problem? You know, if, if it's a, a bar, or a restaurant, or something like that, it's a trash issue. You know, we have, we have restaurants in the area that are notorious for violations, and not to mention restaurants, you know, all kinds of businesses. So I think we should do, use a little bit more scrutiny when we renew licenses, instead of just approving them automatically, like we normally do, and just ask, is the water bill paid? You know, that's what we always ask, you know, but, uh, something I wanna do.
Yeah, it's a little bit more than just the water bill, and we'll make sure there's no taxes that are unpaid, we make sure there's no tickets are unpaid, we make sure there's no water is unpaid, et cetera, et cetera. I do see your point, the only thing I would have to ask, our Corporation Council, I, I'm just not sure off the top of my head, and you could better answer that than I can, whether, let's say, Century 21, where I'm at, and, let's pretend, it's not the case. Let's pretend, that there was, you know, I don't know, 20 tickets for blood, grass, whatever. We can't deny a license for that business to continue to operate, can we?
Well, we can in certain ways, it's just however you have to go through due process in order to basically be able to do it. It's far more complicated, and that's why it's not typically done. So there is a process under Chapter 6 of the city, or Chapter 8, actually, of the city code, with respect to that. I think we have one for vendors, we have one for city business licenses, and then you could potentially have one in terms of the zoning issues handled separately from that, too.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, a little gray, but we could.
Yes, maybe we could look into something, you can, you know, do something in the future, maybe we, because, you know, that, that fall hand in hand, like I said, with the ordinance, because we've always talked about doing something with the ordinance department, ramping it, or something, giving them more authority, or something, maybe we can schedule something in the future when we have some free time. I think it's a real important issue.
Yeah, and again, this just extends what had lapsed, and then we could definitely do, if we decide we're gonna do a, you know, a study session on this, no problem, but I think, in my personal opinion, because this at, at least appears to affect the Van Born corridor the most, because there was a lot of vacant, commercial properties there. In my opinion, I think this would be a good idea, just keep this thing going the way it is right now, until the City of Taylor and the City of Dearborn Heights have come to, you know, some sort of a total agreement, as far as which direction we're going, and then we'll decide which direction we wanna go with this.
All right, yeah, thank you.
But at least with this, it does limit used car lots in the city, period. Okay, thank you. So, any other discussions on this? Okay, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is our favorite city clerk, Linsenya, purchase and payment of laptops and mice under election security grant.
Okay, I'd like to read the motion.
Go ahead, Councilor.
That the City of Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase of 27 laptops and mice under the election security grant in an amount not to exceed $20,621.79 per the Michigan deal quote, obtained by Director of Technology Cooper. In addition, authorize the mayor, I'm sure, or clerk, to sign the warrant and the treasurer to issue payment on receipt from account 101-190-981.000, as outlined in 9B.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, supported by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion on this? Just a quick item on this, this is, this is coming from grant money, so it is not city money, it is not taxpayer money, or direct taxpayer money, and also, this is, as I spoke with our Madam Clerk, much, much needed laptops. Ours are like extremely outdated, so this is good stuff for the residents and for the voters. Any other discussions on this? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 13, new business renewal.
Councilor Chair? Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business license for Cooper's garage located at 21244 Van Born as outlined in 13A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Is any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is members of the public, let's start with comments from council members. Is there any comments from council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I just want to thank the billing director, Robert Conrad, for making our property outside look a little better. Looks like they, they're keeping up with our, our grass and our weeds out front, and city hall looks pretty good. And also, been in contact with department heads on items here that needed to be discussed with me, and I thank them kindly for responding to me via phone or email, along with the police chief and police commissioner. And I, and I want to remind residents, please keep your trash cans on the grass and not in the street. Please pile your trash that you have outside your cans in a neatly orderly fashion in bags, just don't spread it around on the lawn. I traveled the city today, and I seen some of the way people put their trash out, and it's just, it, it's ridiculous, and other cities don't allow it, and I think that we're just as good as they are, so let's prove it. Let's, let's, let's do our, our share to help out the city and keep it, keep it clean and, and bright. Thank you very kindly for your time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Breyer?
Just to continue on that aspect, I had one neighbor near Gully, Colgate Street, that left a can out probably since last Friday in the street about, oh, two, three feet away from the curb. Cars were dodging, couldn't get in from Gully Road, et cetera. I tried to move that can and put it up on the easement, it must have been full of bricks. I couldn't do it. So finally, another neighbor apparently moved that can, and we could have traffic move today. So that was bad. But what I'd like to do is compliment all those that attended Saturdays in front of Warren Valley. We had our flags going, the mayor was there, I was there, and, and David was there, and we supported our wounded warriors, the motorcyclists that came from Down River and all the way up through here, and there must have been 100 different people and about 70 motorcycles.
Oh, more than 70.
It was huge, and it was very nice, and we did have this beautiful, large flag. How many?
I was going to say, it's about 200.
Oh, okay, I underestimated by half. But it was a nice thing to see happen in our city, and I hope we continue. I believe this was second annual? Seventh? Okay, I only did two. Okay, I'll be there for the rest. Thank you very much.
And it was, it was for a great, of course, purpose, and I, and I thank and salute all of our, our officers and military. It was also this little kid in me, it's pretty cool to see 200 motorcycles drive through back to back to back with all the roaring, so I was a little giddy, you know, watching, it's pretty cool.
I thought you were one of those highwaymen.
No, 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 it wasn't me, it wasn't me. Wasn't me. But it was pretty cool. Councilman Wenzel? You have something?
Thank you, Council Chair. Thanks, everyone, for coming out today. Nice crowd here on a eventless meeting, basically, you know? But I want to talk a little bit about the Warren Valley Golf Course. You know, the golf course, it's not going in the direction that many, myself or many of us people in Dearborn Heights thought it would be at this point. The last agreement that, or draft that was presented to us was far from anything that I, I even anticipated. I was shocked by when I seen it. Not that the banquet facility was taken care of pretty well, but the, the lack of concern about the golf course itself was really overwhelming and disheartening. And the mayor's been doing a lot of good things for the city, and backing him on a lot of things. And this, this particular issue, I was hoping by now that people would be golfing there, you know, middle of July. This started in March, and I say, my gosh, God forbid this thing takes till May or June. And so that, for some reason or another, it's just not progressing the way it should be. This golf course stood there for 99 years, and they golfed on it for 99 years, and in a matter of four months, it went from a golf course to a pasture. So I'm not going to settle for anything less than revitalizing, revamping, or reconditioning, whatever term you want to use, all 36 holes of the golf course. And I'd like, I want to start maybe by, you know, getting a consultant, or maybe setting up a nonprofit organization, you know, Friends of the Warren Valley Golf Course. Get a consultant in there. I've, I've talked to two golf course professionals already, they kind of gave me an idea of, you know, what it's going to take. You know, unfortunately, you know, this year is out of the question. It's sad, 99 years you golf there, and then one year, it's, it's gone. I mean, it's just, it's heartbreaking. You know, I, I had several golf outings there, and my family's golfed there for many years, and it's not the best course in the world. You know, it's far from it. You know, I mean, but last year, you know, this golf course that no one liked, no one, you know, criticized the condition, there's over 50,000 rounds of golf played there last year. And that's a golf course no one likes? The golf course was there for the people who wanted to golf on Warren Valley, and they didn't want to go someplace else. They, you know what? They drove 10 minutes to get there, and it was in their city. Some people rode bikes there. But I don't know how I'm going to do this, I just, this came to me today, yesterday, today, about setting up a nonprofit, going in there, hiring a consultant, is the city can provide a consultant? I don't know who the city was using during the negotiations as a golf course consultant, I, I wasn't informed on that, but maybe they could lend that guy to us, and maybe if someone's out there that could help us, you know, with the legal part of setting up a nonprofit, go in there and, and start the process. The professionals I talked to said, you've got to start the process right now for next year. And, you know, cleaning it up, checking, you know, checking out different things on the golf course, making sure that they're up to snuff or they need to be repaired. But you've got to start something, you can't just do nothing for six, almost six months of doing nothing to this golf course. Water's sat on it for, the water's never sat on the golf course this long, in 99 years. It's always been pumped off in a reasonable amount of time. It's just, like I said, it's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking, and I can't sit back and just watch it day after day, week after week, month after month, being neglected the way it is. So if anyone out there wants to help with this, get ahold of me, or get ahold of the city or somebody, and let's do something, let's set something up, let's get this process started. I don't, you know, I, I'm not, I'm hoping that some, something's going to happen in the contract, but I was hoping in March, something was going to happen in the contract, and in May, and, and June, I was hoping. And obviously, there's issues there that we're not aware of, they're, they're coming up, so nothing's happening. So let's take the, the initiative and take the first step, and let's start something, the process of doing something for this golf course. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman, just to answer some of your questions, and, and this is where me and you have not seen eye to eye sometimes. So some of the statements that are made, again, will, will, will give just the false impression. I, I can answer for myself. Is the golf course where it needs to be right now? No. I'm, I'm not happy. I'm dissatisfied, but so is the administration. But when you say we do nothing since March, that's a, I don't know, a weak statement, honestly, because there has been stuff done since March. I've been involved, the mayor's been involved, you've been involved. We had a meeting here a couple weeks back, when the contract came, we didn't approve the contract as a council body. So we asked our Corporation Council and the administration to go back to the table, and then make sure we have the right conditions on it that we wanted. They've done that. That's coming back to ours. They're finalizing it with the Corporation Council and then their attorneys, and coming back, I tell you, as a council chair, I can speak to that myself, I hope I'm not speaking out of line, but, you know, on the 28th, I believe it's 28th, our next council meeting in two weeks, the contract, is it 28th?
26.
26, okay. On 26, the contract, more than likely, 99% is going to be on there for us to vote on. So that's number one. Do nothing? No, there has been stuff done.
Just let me, let me, let me check just for one second. When I say do nothing, I meant physically maintaining a golf course. That's all I'm saying. That's all I mean by doing nothing.
So I agree, administration should be maintaining it better. I, 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 I'll make that statement, absolutely. But there is also a cost involved, of course, in that, and then they're hoping, and, and based on a lot of the conversations, that the persons can be taking it over, in this particular case, at least so far, Issa Brothers, that they take it over ASAP, so that they can start doing whatever they need to do. And when they came back to us with the contract, they had it without the golf course, and I, amongst the rest of my council members, yourself, too, rejected that. We said, no, we're not going to have somebody just take over the banquet and not the golf course. And we said, no, it's got to be both, or none, or else it goes back to, you know, proposals, request for proposals. So there is something doing, I, I, I just don't want to give the false impression that nothing's being done, because something is being done, and we just have to be fair. And I'm, and look, I'm not trying to protect the mayor or the administration, it is, whatever's bad, I'll say it. But they are working on it, and I've had every conversation with the mayor, he wants it done.
I know, but I'm, I'm saying, don't, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I'm, I'm not saying contract negotiation, everybody knows contract negotiations going on, because that's all the answers we've gotten, and we asked what's going on, they said, we're negotiating. I mean, that's for, for, I'm just talking about, I, I walked the golf course the other day, and the greens, they, they, someone, there was a rumor going around that the greens had been cut. The greens haven't been cut. You know, I, I, I had to talk to a professional that was out there, and they said, them greens have never been cut this year. They haven't been fertilized like they normally have, they've never been watered, you know, obviously, because, you know, but that's what I'm talking about. I say nothing's been done to the golf course, I'm saying.
But that's what I want to clarify.
Yeah. Negotiations, I, I agree 100%, there is negotiations going on, and that's, everybody knows that. I'm just saying, the golf course, the physical golf course.
We're on the same page.
And, and, you know, to say that in July 26th, it's going to be before us, you know, I hope it is, but, you know, in March, it was supposed, we, we had three weeks, it was supposed to be before us, the first meeting in April. A contract was supposed to be put in front of us the first week in April, and it wasn't. So, I mean, I don't want to say I can't believe any, what everybody says, but the track, the track record speaks for itself.
Okay. Stay my made, I appreciate it. Okay. Next, I just want to make two quick announcements. First of all, I know we've been beating them up for a while, but I want to commend Priority Waste, because they've drastically improved their customer service. There's still some glitches, there's still some hiccups, there's still some things that are happening, I'm, I'm not oblivious to that. But I gotta, I gotta give it to Paul Rothenberg, I mean, he's done a lot of work, he's taken this over, and he's definitely going in the right direction. Every time he's been called with a problem from a resident, he's been all over it, and every resident has called me back to say that he did it, and he did it right. So we got to give them, look, we got to give credit where credit is due. They've done a much, much better job. I'm much more comfortable with them today as I would have been maybe a month ago. A month ago, I would have been good with canceling them. He asked us for a week, maximum 10 days, to get this thing up and running. It's going in the right direction, it's progressing in the right direction, so I'm happy with that. The second main thing that I want to commend, I want to commend our Dearborn Heights Police Department, and most importantly, Officer Hashem's reign. I can't get into the details, but I got contacted by a resident, a mother crying in regards to a situation with her child, and I'm not going to get into the details. I didn't know what to do, I explained to them, you know, I'm not a police officer, you should call the police. They said, they did call the police, they did get the process started, whereas a lot of you know, a mother can never feel comfortable with just that. So I made some calls, this was like around 10:30, whatever, 10 o'clock at night, and I got ahold of Officer Hashem's reign, he promised me he'd be all over it and would, would get this resolved with helping the child in that situation, I'm intentionally being vague with that, because it's a child. All I want to let you know is, two hours later, he contacted me, the problem solved with the child, the mother was happy. I didn't do it, Officer Hashem's reign and the police department did it. That's why I commend him for a job well done, so I try to give him some behind. Any other comments from council members?
Can I add to what you just said with the police department? I talked to Chief Hart, and in the south end, we had a six-year-old who left home without his parents' knowledge, and he was lost for a while, and this child is, has some issues, and has done this before, but our police found him. He has two places, one of them being the Dollar Store he goes to, and he was, he was located and taken back home to the parents. So they're doing a great job.
Good job, police department. Okay, next up is announcements from the administration.
Council Chair? Okay, I, I, I had one other thing written down here, I wanted to, there's been several complaints about the Century 21, no.
You just had to do that, didn't you?
No.
I'm going to go back to home right now. Okay.
Okay, well, anyway, you know, last, last week, or 10 days ago, we had the, the concert in the park with the 50 amp fuse. You know, I am promoting family events, and it was a great family event. I mean, we had a great crowd, Director Lawrence L. had the, reconfigured the whole stage setup, and everything was really good. It was, the crowd was spread out, really good crowd, all my kids had a great time there, it was a blast, seeing a lot of people there, the mayor was there, the firefighters, the other council people and stuff. But it, it was a lot of fun, and, and we have, the Parks and Recs have more events coming up, at the end of this month, I believe, there's a Jimmy Buffett tribute band coming up, and I'm not sure the date, July 28th, and, and these are all, these are all family fun events, you know, they're, they're made that way, and she's, she's doing a great job there.
Action Jackson.
Action Jackson, yeah, she's doing, she's doing her job, for sure. And you know, like I say, it's, it's a great family thing, and I encourage everyone to bring their families out to these things, there's a movie night coming up in, in about a month or so.
By the way, they've all, I think they've all been for free, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, they're all free, yeah, all free, and, I mean, the, the, the food that's there is fantastic, you know, I mean, we had PLAV there, I mean, we, not to just promote them, but the food was fantastic, it's for a good cause, you know, local businesses there, fantastic, and I'm sure the other, next events coming up will be the same, and just, you know, want people to bring their families out to these events, and you know, don't forget to visit with your family, your place of worship every day, and don't forget to donate something in the deposit box there, help them along.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up is announcements, go ahead, from the administration. Mayor?
Well, few items, again, you know, want to make sure that we say what's actually correct information to the residents. So we actually had a few vehicles that we sold, the police department, there was a lot of vehicles hanging just at the station, there was a bunch of them that were sold. We haven't purchased any vehicles yet. There was a lot of vehicles, we still have a lot of vehicles that are old in the city hall, as most of you already see, and, you know, thanks to Chief Hart, actually, he located several vehicles, older vehicles, that we can upgrade some of the stuff that we had, that we needed, you know, for the building department, some of these vehicles, I think Fred Flintstone needs to drive. So we brought some vehicles, about three, to be exact, to the city hall, you know, for, to drive. Obviously, nobody can drive their personal vehicles when they go on a job, it's a liability issue. So that's one. So there hasn't been, nobody has vehicle, you know, other than, you know, just work vehicles. The other thing is for priority waste, they have, they have done an outstanding job in the last few weeks. However, the residents, they need to stop putting their, they have to put just whatever trash, you know, in the bins outside. If they have excess trash, they need to get ahold of priority waste in advance, let them know that they have excess trash, so they can send a separate vehicle.
You're talking about like bulk items?
Bulk, well, no, they do take a bulk item, one bulk item out, but I'm talking about when they, everybody puts everything outside. I don't know where they're bringing all that trash from. There were several, several people that actually that were caught, they were bringing trash from the outside, you know, they were offloading trucks into their yard, you know, both compost and also regular trash. So we've seen several of those in the city. So that has to stop. We are sending ordinance to issue citations to those residents. So make sure if there's anything excess trash, you know, call in advance, they will be charged for excess trash. The other item, you know, I want to thank also the, both the police department and also the fire department for the event on Saturday. They, they did show up and they, they did an amazing job with convoy. It started in Don River, it went to several cities, and our police department participated in that convoy to make sure that they have a safe travel through the city. And the fire department also showed up, thanks to them as well. The other thing is, I've, I've been getting several, getting calls from several people that they paid deposit to the previous concessionaire that was operating the golf course. If you get the same calls, please direct them. You know, we were told, Mr. Miyake and myself, in a meeting with their attorney, that they didn't take any deposit from any resident or anybody. But since that, since that took place, I'm getting a lot of calls, you know, in the last several months. And if any resident, anybody that paid deposit to the previous concessionaire, please, you know, don't call the city hall, call Inchester Valley and talk to Eric. He's the one that is, that was operating the golf course. The city had nothing to do with it. So please call Eric at Inchester Valley, because the city didn't take any money. There was no money that was exchanged from, and we do have, we will, we will have illegal action against that previous concessionaire for money owed to the city. Just want to let you guys know that. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else from administration have any announcements?
You know, I, I have one thing to say, I take it back on the mayor there. With the, with the, the bulk, bulk trash that people put out, I, I drive around and I see, you know, day after garbage day, and I see some bulk trash still sitting there. I go up to the house and I want to find out, you know, how long ago they called it in to be picked up. And a lot of times, the people never call. They just set it out there thinking it's going to be picked up. You have to call and request a bulk trash pickup. That's very important.
Okay. Thank you, councilman. Madam Clerk, are you speaking as a clerk or as a resident?
I am speaking as a clerk.
Go ahead.
Okay. As many of our residents, our registered voters have, may have received new voter registration cards, which were recently mailed to every registered voter in the city of Dearborn Heights. These cards were mailed due to the redistricting that took place earlier this year by the state of Michigan. Redistricting occurs every 10 years and is usually the result of the census. As the clerk's office has been receiving phone calls regarding these cards, I would like to provide all of our residents with some additional information. The list of registered voters that was used to generate the voter registration cards came from the Qualified Voter File, maintained by the state of Michigan Bureau of Elections. These cards are informational for you. If they are correct, you do not need to do anything. If you received a voter card at your address for someone who does not reside there, please mark the card with an explanation and please return to us. We can then update the Qualified Voter File with that information. Per Michigan election law, an individual whose name does not otherwise appear in the Qualified Voter File, it must be placed in the Qualified Voter File only if the individual signs under penalties of perjury an application that contains an attestation that the applicant meets the requirements to vote. The clerk's office understands the concerns you may have as to why someone who is listed at your address is a registered voter and does not live there or perhaps should not be registered to vote. That is why we would like, we need your help. We would like to notify us as soon as possible so we can update the records to maintain the integrity of the voter file. We have discovered that in a few instances, we have over 40, we sent over 44,000 out. So in a few instances, that we have notified of this occurrence, the person has not voted and is marked to verify in the system, which means they would not be able to vote without identification and provide verification to establish that they are able to vote and, and do reside at the address they are registered to. It has also come to our attention that a voter may have registered unknowingly. This may occur through the Michigan Secretary of State's office when applying for a state ID or driver's license. Per Michigan election law, the Secretary of State shall automatically register to vote each individual who meets the qualifications of an elector and submits an application for an operator's or chauffeur's license or enhanced driver's license, or enhanced state identification. In addition, the Secretary of State will automatically register you to vote if you submit a change of address. The qualifications are, you must be a citizen of the United States, not less than 17 and a half years old, and a resident of the township or the city. So if you apply for a driver's license, state ID, or update your address at the Secretary of State's office and do not opt out of registering to vote, the Secretary of State will automatically register you or update your address in the Qualified Voter File, they're connected. When this happens, we are notified and will mail out a new voter registration card. The reason they are mailed and never handed out in person is, we need to make sure that person actually resides there. If it comes back to us or we are notified by the current resident, they, they do not live there, we can, or George can, update the Qualified Voter File. Additionally, if someone is registered to vote in order to receive a ballot, either absentee or in person, there are a series of verification checks to establish that the person be issued a ballot. In the case of an absentee vote, the signature on the application is checked against the signature in the Qualified Voter File. And then the ballot is mailed to their address, or if picked up in person, they must show identification or fill out and sign an affidavit of voter not in possession of ID. When voting in person, identification is required. If someone does not have their ID, they must sign the affidavit on the back of the applications. Affidavits are signed under penalties of perjury. The fact that in those few instances where we have been notified that a voter card has been sent to someone who does not reside at an address, and we have determined that they did not use that address to vote, further shows that the safeguards put in place to only allow eligible voters to vote are working. Once again, if you have received a card at your address for someone who should not be registered or does not reside there, please let us know so we can update the accuracy of the Qualified Voter File for the state of Michigan. So, over 44,000 voter ID cards have been mailed. If you have not received yours, or if you have any questions, please, please call the clerk's office at 313-791-3439. And I can't thank enough our, our residents for supplying with that, us with that information, return the cards to us. Then we, that's the only way we can take action on it. We just can't automatically remove somebody from the voter files. And then, of course, to the phenomenal clerk staff, we couldn't do it without them. And our, and our pit crew has been working really hard. Thank you.
I have a question.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
No questions. That was long enough, I got me three minutes in. I have a question as to why our November election is not on the first Tuesday of the month and it's the second Tuesday.
The first Tuesday after the first Monday.
Yes, thank you. Because it messes up our council meeting, Ray and I work the elections.
Oh, well, then we have that election, we have the meeting on Thursday. You won't have a meeting that day. Because this is a polling location.
Never do.
Yeah, we never do. It's already on the annual publication.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
You're working.
Thank you, clerk's office.
Thank you.
I got a question. What, what was that you said after you're speaking as a clerk?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and everybody in the elections. I know you guys are working really hard.
Oh, yeah.
And it's greatly appreciated so elections run smoothly. I'm Lisa Hicks Clayton, I'm speaking as a treasurer. I come bearing news, I don't know if it's good or bad or indifferent, but be kind. Your tax, summer tax bills have been mailed out. They were mailed out on July 1st, so you should have received them in your homes. If you have not received your summer tax bill, please call the treasurer's office at 313-791-3410. What I wanted to briefly talk about, and I have copies for.
Treasurer?
Yes.
I think that's a phone call you'll never get.
Yeah.
We are, and I'm going to tell you why we're getting phone calls. That's for all the council members, but I'll tell you, I'll let you all see what it is. It's a copy of a tax bill, summer tax bill for this year, for summer. And what I want you to know, what we're getting calls about is, residents are curious what the breakout is. They're like, what's all these taxes? And it's like the same taxes you have had for years as the council body approves the millages, but your treasurer's office this year broke them out for you. They're itemized, so you can see exactly what you're paying for and how much you're paying for it. And if you have any questions, like what is sanitation or what is Act 345? If you go to the backside, it explains all of those. It will even tell you when the millage was originally voted on by the residents. Okay? So that is great information. And I've told the council this, and I'm going to repeat this, and I really appreciate all of your support. At point of entry, when this bill comes in with its check, it is automatically separated because those are restricted accounts, restricted funds. We are automatically separating them at point of entry. This is the first time this has been done. We're pretty excited about that, I'm pretty excited about that. But I get excited about these kind of things. The other thing I just want to tell you is, thank you to our chief of staff, Mariana Hernandez, and our director, IT director, Mr. Cooper, to getting things online for us on the website. So you have all this information at your fingertips, but if you go to the homepage of the city's website, there's ways to pay your summer taxes. And we've really worked at expanding the payment platform. And if you actually look and you count them all up, there's like 12 different options, which is pretty awesome. Again, I get excited about that. But what I wanted to tell you about today is, not only can you mail your tax bill in using the white envelope, but please allow enough time, all right, with the United States Postal Service. You can pay in person, we're here Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So you can do that. You can use our drop boxes. We have one out by the parking lot on the, that would be the east side by the flagpole, and one on the wall, but please do not drop cash. You must always include your original tax bill, though, and write your parcel number on your check. You can pay online by visiting the city website. You can pay with your phone, okay, a phone app. It is the easiest thing ever, because that's what I use, and I'm very tech impaired, okay? So I, I love that. I love the phone app. You can pay by phone as well, that is listed online, what number to call. You can pay at a Dearborn Heights, Dearborn Federal Savings Bank, there's two locations. One is 27115 West Warren, the other one is 411 South Telegraph. We got both sides of the city covered. You can pay there, Dearborn Federal Savings Bank. And we have convenient kiosks throughout the city. So again, I want to, I want to encourage you to utilize any of those payment methods that's most convenient for you. If you have questions about how to use a kiosk, we have it here for, at you at City Hall, we have it in English as well as Arabic for you. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, treasurer. I see with a raised hand, Director Kimberly, Lauren Sell. Go ahead, Director.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
As Councilman Wensel was talking about our concert, I'd like to first off, thank all the city employees who helped pull off the fantastic event on June 30th. I'd like to also thank the Parks and Rec staff, Building and Maintenance Department, the Highway Department, Police Department, and Fire Department. Also, Robert Seleski, who actually did a lot of the mowing. And any other staff and volunteers that helped out, we had a lot of the high school kids help out with the event that day. So it was a huge success and I was very pleased with it. We've also got, coming up, July 28th, Thursday, we've got Parrots of the Caribbean. It's going to be a Margaritaville concert, it's Jimmy.
Buffett.
They're going to wear their Hawaiian shirt, so it's going to be a blast, we're going to have a little.
Director?
Yes.
You said it's going to be Jimmy, and then you got cut off. I finished it with Buffett.
Yes.
I don't know if there's anything else to say.
So it's going to be an amazing night, they're a fantastic band, so hopefully everybody can make it. We also have a classic car show and contest for the car show that night as well. If you made it on June 30th, you got to see our motorcycle show, which was really nice, and we had a lot of participation in that from the veterans group. So that was nice. So hopefully you can join us on the 28th of July. I'd also like to announce, and actually, I'm happy to announce this, that we did receive a grant from the Senior Alliance, three years in a row, $10,000 a year. And I'm going to use that, those funds to help subsidize our part-time senior coordinator at the Eaton Center. I'm also happy to announce, we actually just hired somebody today. Her name is Josie Hinosa for the Eaton Center as a part-time coordinator. She comes to us with, believe it or not, a bachelor's degree in gerontology and lots of experience. Her degree is from Madonna University. We're very excited to have her and very lucky, and I would like to welcome her to our team. So we've got a lot going on with Parks and Rec, and hopefully you guys can join us and, you know, have some fun with us.
Director, can you give us that name again? Josie what?
Josie Hinosa. Her last name is spelled H-I-N-O-J-O-S-A. And she's accepted the position and will be starting, hopefully, sometime next week on the completion of her paperwork.
Thank you. And also, Director, I just want to make sure you got my message in regards to looking into an art fair?
I did.
Okay.
And I have to work on getting full staffed again, so.
No, I got, I got it, but just something to look into.
Maybe something for next summer. I've actually already thought about that, but I wanted to try and get something going with some other events I wanted to try, but I definitely have got that on my list.
Beautiful. Thank you, Director, appreciate it. Anybody else on, as far as from administration? I see a resident here, but I'll have him speak during the resident section. Anybody else from the administration have any?
I forgot to announce.
Okay, you had to do it quick.
Yeah. Really quick announcements. I'm sorry that we didn't have many people last month at our meetings for the Ecorse Creek and the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association, I was out of state. But we will be having both of those meetings this month, and on the 27th, 6:00 PM, the Ecorse Creek meeting will take place at 3335 South Beach Daily. And unfortunately, I'm going to miss the conference with Jimmy Buffett because the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association has their meeting on the 28th at 7:00 PM at that same location, 33 South Beach Daily. So we'd like to invite you to attend and keep up on what we're doing with the Ecorse Creek. Hopefully, big things are coming, we're, the city's working on them, we're working with the county. Hope to have some good news soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilwoman. So next up, we're going to go ahead to members of the audience. I'm going to go ahead and start with Zoom first, and then we'll go ahead to people that are here in public. You will have three minutes. Please state your name, city, and street. And, so I don't have to keep telling you guys, please, make sure you speak as close as you can to the mic because our technology team is just having a hard time picking this up and making sure that people, residents can hear it online and on cable.
So we're going to Zoom, right?
I'm sorry?
We're going to.
I'm going to go to Zoom first. Yeah, we want to make sure Leslie's happy.
Okay.
Okay. So first up is Mr. Hassan Saab. Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes.
Okay, he should be good. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hassan Saab, John Daly, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Is about the golf course and Councilman Wensell. I just want to know, when did he walk in? Who are the professionals that walked it with him? I'm just curious to know who they are. Second question is to Mr. Wensell is, why do, does he, we need help doing a nonprofit? I thought you run a nonprofit. You would know everything about it. Why would we need help from other people and attorney and legal fees? Don't you have your own nonprofit you run? That's so important, I'm pretty sure you can dedicate time to it.
I do have a nonprofit, but my nonprofit doesn't have liability insurance. And I could do it, I've got, I do have a nonprofit that's willing to help out with this, that does have liability insurance, but I think it's best if we set up a completely separate entity with the Warren Valley, Friends of the Warren Valley Golf Course with its own nonprofit status.
And my other, my last question is, I just want to know, I kind of have a concern about the maintenance, the people that do the maintenance in the city at the senior centers. It's coming to my attention of a few things. I want to know what their qualifications are, these, some of these city employees that go out into these senior centers, and things aren't going to be, what is their qualification for them to go, for example, work on plumbing or do electrical work? What qualifications do they have? I know their employees. They got certificates.
Wait, wait, Mr. Saab, you got cut off? You said, what qualifications? You said what qualifications, then you got cut off and you came back with, I know they got employees.
Right. Are they licensed, qualifications, certificates? I mean.
Okay. Who are you, who are you asking that question to specifically that you want to answer that?
To, I don't know if Mr. Conrad's on there or not.
I believe he is. I've seen him earlier.
The maintenance department in the city or facilities. It's just a concern that I just don't think the city services and maintenance is that some of these senior centers, I think, is getting done correctly because I think they lack knowledge.
Okay. Okay. So Mr. Conrad's on there. I'll have him answer you in a second. Was there anything else, Mr. Saab? Are you all set? Is he still on or?
No, I'm still here.
Oh, okay. So we all set? Because I'm going to go ahead and have the DPW Director Conrad answer your question. Are you all set with your questions?
Yeah, yeah. I think I can answer. I'm actually going to file a FOIA for that, too. I just want to know what these are.
Okay. Mr. Conrad, you want to go ahead and try to answer that question if you're on, if you could hear us?
Sure. So we have our basic building maintenance staff. They do, you know, the basic stuff like clear plug toilets, you know, maybe change a broken faucet or something like that. Basically, all the simple mechanical stuff that's in the buildings. Anything that would require a licensed electrician or a licensed plumber, we have contractors that we use for those services. So, you know, the in-house staff is, is, you know, they will evaluate, if it's something they can't handle, then that's when we bring in our contractors.
Okay. I have one question for you, sir. Out of all, out of all the issues or tickets that you get stating that there's issues in these senior centers, how many of them are worked on by the city and how many of them are contracted on?
I do not have those numbers right now. I mean, I would have, I don't even, I would have to check and see how we track those.
Okay. Is there a way you track them, though?
I, I mean, we have service requests that come in from the different departments. So, I mean, that's how, or observations that we make when, you know, we're in the senior centers ourself. So, but, you know, we are all. Work order and service request program. We're kind of going to work with our new IT Director and all the departments where, you know, Chief of Staff Mariana would like to get something that, you know, would be used not just by the DPW but by the entire city. So, you know.
I'm sorry to answer so many questions. I'm, as I'm writing them down, I'm actually going to file a FOIA tonight for this information because I seriously have concerns about two seniors that I talked to. And, and it needs to be addressed. So I'll be sending a FOIA over tonight, actually, about this. So I hope you guys can have all those tracks and invoices since you guys get outside contracts to do the work and pay them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Saab. Anybody else on Zoom? Okay, seeing none. We're going to go ahead and go ahead and go to members of the audience. Anybody in the audience have any public comments? Come on up, man. Yes, absolutely.
My name is Karen Contreras. I'm from Catherine Street in Dearborn Heights, Michigan. My husband and I currently reside at 4934 Catherine Street, a home my parents bought on the GI Bill in 1955. We are addressing the council to lack, because of lack of communication from your offices and lack of actions regarding a serious and unacceptable situation. I'm speaking on behalf of two other long-term homeowners on our street, James and Lynn Kelly at 4918 Catherine, Chris and Jackie Bondi at 4926 Catherine. A home behind us at 4927 Monroe Street had a terrible fire November 21st, 2021, which left the home inhabitable. That was 234 days ago. A few boards have been secured on the home. The grass is being cut to make the front look presentable. However, no cleanup in the back. I have a photo here I would like to share with you guys if you want to just go ahead and pass that around as to what the backyard looks like. Okay. This has left the perfect habitat for rats to live and multiply. We now have a serious rat problem in our yards. Our neighbor has killed at least four in the last week and his dog has been killing them as well, which is of great concern because the neighbor behind us lost his dog due to it eating a poison rat, per the veterinarian. Dogs touching or ingesting the rats increase the potential for disease to spread to humans. We watched a large rat two nights ago run up and down our fence line until it came into my yard. We have seen rat droppings and rat holes near the foundation of our slab homes and several in our yard. The three of us with pets have been diligent in picking up dog stool because we know this attracts them. My husband called, emailed, and left messages with Kevin Abbott, starting on June 1st, at the ordinance office regarding the situation, as well as emailed Mayor Bozzi on June 24th and 27th regarding the rats. On your website, it states that any structure that is no longer inhabitable because of fire should be promptly repaired or removed. Rats carry hantavirus, leptospirosis, lymphocytic coriomeningitis, tumulumaria, and salmonella. During my career at University of Michigan Hospital, I have personally seen what some of these viruses can do to human beings. Rats reach sexual maturity at nine weeks of age and start having pups. Two rats can reach 1,250 in one year. We are over 230 days, seven and a half months, and have far more than two. So you can do the math to know how many are tunneling and nesting in our yards and under our homes and other structures. Our expectation at this point is the city will use our tax dollars to send a cleanup crew to have all garbage and hazards removed from the property and at the home, at the home, and place rat traps in place. And the home should either be demolished or completely boarded up so that no rats can get in. If we do not see a crew out there by the end of July, the following will happen. I have a friend who is a morning news anchor at WDIV Detroit at the local news involved. We will contact our family attorney and forward all correspondence regarding health hazards and emotional stress of the situation. And the next correspondence will be with our attorney. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
I do know we had a problem like that in a few other locations and sometimes our hands are tied by insurance's companies.
Yes, that's true.
And, but I don't know if we can press the insurance companies to have a massive cleanup there or anything.
If we can have a massive cleanup, if we go to their insurance company or the homeowners themselves on this? Something should still be done regardless if there's an insurance claim on the house.
It needs to be secured because you're having a big rat problem.
Yeah. I mean, I'm going to ask that to Corporation Council, what he, what he thinks on that because it, you know, it does seem like it's a hazardous.
Yeah, no, it, it looks like something that actually should go to the Demolition Board of Appeals, but that requires that there would end up being some investigation done with respect to that. I don't know if the Ordinance Enforcement Department and/or the Building Department have been aware of this. I haven't seen this matter come over to the.
Wait, sir. There won't be. Please. Okay.
And if I may, so I'm not interrupted.
Yeah, yeah. Let's just have him finish.
But I, but I don't remember seeing this one come over for prosecution, but it certainly should be handled through the Demo Board of Appeals.
And I'm just wondering how, maybe it's best to privately give, have them give the administration their phone number. Have one of the directors, whether it's ordinance or building contact, and work on that, maybe.
Well, we wanted to see Council Chair, so there's a fire, so there's always an investigation. So I need to see the status of the investigation by the fire department to make sure that the investigation is complete before the insurance actually takes over.
I know, but I'm just saying, Mayor, like, for us right now as a body, we can't handle this because obviously it's some director is going to be speaking with them. But I'll allow you to go ahead and speak your mind.
Yes, my name is Jeff Contreras. So, so walking that route, I went up to the door a month ago, month and a half ago and there, because there's two ordinance flyers on there, filled out completely, name, address, violations, and all that. Those disappeared. Couple days later, I see new notices there. About a week later, I walked up, they're completely blank. There is nothing filled in on any of them that struck me as quite odd as to, they're, they're beyond the expiration. When you put an ordinance on the door, you have so long to act on it. Way beyond that, and then someone from the city obviously puts up new ordinances with violations, but there's nothing, completely blank. No name, no address, not one line is filled out. I went by today, the same ones are still there.
Okay. So. Yeah, no, I know we can't, Council Chair, but I'm going to ask the administration to please get their phone number. Contact them tomorrow and let's try to resolve this because we as a body, I don't know what to do. I mean, I know there's insurance involved, fire departments and so, and believe me, I want that gone.
Council Chair, ordinance is online. So you want to.
Do you have any kind of department that can just send a court crew out?
Council Chair.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll.
Ordinance Director.
So I'm going to allow the ordinance, I'm going to allow the ordinance director to speak and be, you know, in regards to this on behalf of the city. But meanwhile, if one of you guys can write down all your contact info and maybe give it to Chief of Staff, Mariana back there, and then she'll make sure that she gives it to the right director to follow through because it's a little complex. And give you a call. I want them to give them a call. Yeah. They'll give you a call and follow through with this. Director Dushrun, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you can hear me or not.
Yes, we can.
The bad connection as usual today. I believe that that house, if memory serves me correctly, there's a lock on the gate and there is also an insurance issue with that property. That being said, myself and I will get Building Department Director to go out there tomorrow. We can take a look at it.
We logged on.
We're not going to have access to the backyard because I believe the gate is locked.
Okay. You got, you got cut off on take a look at it, but can you make sure you get the contact information for the gentleman and the young lady from Mariana and then contact him, please?
Council Chair.
Absolutely.
If I may, in terms of, like, I don't know where this picture was taken from. The city may not have, the city may not have access to the same angle, in which case, if the, these individuals, these neighbors have access to that, that may be helpful to us in terms of being able to support further actions. In other words, sometimes people don't want to get involved. We get a picture like this, but that's not what the ordinance officers can see. So it'd be very helpful for these individuals to talk to people and be put in contact with the Building Department Director and/or Ordinance Enforcement so that we can support further actions being taken.
Mariana, we'll give it to Bill Dushrun and then you and him can go ahead and take it from there. But thank you for coming, sir. Anybody else? Come on up. You have three minutes.
Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. With the item that you added to the Corporation Council budget, I looked at the backup. It said it was adding, but it didn't say where those funds were being taken from, like if they were being taken from another department or something like that. For budget amendments, don't we usually have to take from somewhere to move it so that the balance, that we still say balanced? You guys didn't.
That one, from what I have, it's from the general fund unless, is that correct? Yes.
It was coming from general fund? Okay, thank you. And then.
And for those that are not familiar with general fund, that's the little cushion of money that most entities have.
I'm, and then a couple, like, more fun things. I'm glad to have a treasurer that gets excited about weird nerdy treasurer things because that means she's going to, like, do her job well. And it's good to have somebody that's excited about their job and likes it. Like, that's a good thing. I was at Target and saw happy employees. That's always a good thing. Our firefighters have been posting about their chili cook-off. And with it being a certain sale day for a certain company today and tomorrow with lots of deals, I know they're looking for donations for the chili cook-off to raffle off. And if anybody sees a great deal somewhere in the next day or so, grab it, donate it to the firefighters. That goes to help kids go to the burn camp and I know they would really appreciate that. And then the last thing is July is Disability Pride Month. And I just learned about a really cool initiative that is more prominent at airports, but it's starting to spread throughout the country and throughout kind of the world. There's a lot of people with invisible disabilities. I have several invisible disabilities. And it's hard when you go somewhere and you don't look disabled, you're not in a wheelchair or something. But there's this cool thing, sunflower lanyards that people can get and wear. Businesses can give them out even at the door. If somebody has a disability, they might need some extra help shopping, something like that. I think that would be a really cool thing. I know the mayor started our first ever business commission and I don't know when they meet or how that's going, but I think that would be a really cool initiative for our business commission to take on to get our businesses in our city friendly and welcoming to all with disabilities. And I know that, you know, it's, it's something important and it's something that we can do as a community to care for each other. So that's all. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel. Anybody else?
Council Chair.
Well, come on up, sir, but I may have the council, I'm sorry, the young lady, go ahead, go ahead, come on up. I may have a go ahead of you if you don't mind. Of course.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to come and introduce myself. My name is Kelly Garrett. I am the mayor of Lathrop Village and I am currently running for the 12th Congressional.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. So you know, and I know better, so sorry. But anyway, I am the mayor of Lathrop Village. I have been the mayor for five years and been on council for 11 years. But I just, whenever I can get an opportunity to come to another council meeting, I try to do that because I am always very interested in seeing how everyone else runs their meetings, too. So I just wanted to say hello to all of you and thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Come on up, sir.
Good evening. My name is John DiMarco. I live on Elizabeth Street in Dearborn. I was here last month with the Planning Commission and there was a proposal, or there is a proposal, to change the zoning of the lots along Inkster. And the letter that I had gotten in the mail said, it was a notice to the neighbors as well as the owners, saying all vacant lots north of Ford Road, south of Warren Avenue, and they're proposing to change it to multifamily. Now, during the discussion, there were a lot of people here that were against it, including myself. There was talks that it was only to city-owned property, but that was never in the paperwork. So my question to the council, because they approved it and it's coming here within the next, I don't know, meeting or two, I personally do not want to see, the, the idea behind it was to expand or to drum up some business for those vacant lots? If that's the intent, why not just expand the use, whether it be residential, light, commercial, maybe if somebody wants to put an apartment building? But then again, I mean, who wants, with all those residents around there, who wants an apartment building or a condo complex? So the question to the board today is, was it specific to city-owned property? Because that's what was said, but it wasn't in the paperwork.
So I was there at the plan, I was there at that particular Planning Commission meeting, but I was there in my capacity as a resident. So I remember the conversation, so obviously, nothing's come in front of me as a city council president to go up for a vote. That I can tell you. Beyond that, I'm not sure if there's anybody else. And again, I was there for something else at that time, so I was not fully engaged.
Council, Council Chair, maybe if Mr. Dib is on, I know he a lot of times attends Planning Commission meetings.
I did not see him.
Mr. Dib, and I think, actually, you know what? I believe Rick Watland was at that particular, but he may or may not be able to go from memory. Rick, are you on there?
He is.
I know he's on there, but I'm not sure if he's listening. Rick Watland, can you hear us? Building Department?
Yes.
Okay, let's see if he comes on. It looks like it. So if you'd like, there are, if it makes it any easier for you, there were Planning Commission minutes that were emailed to me by our clerk. Oh, he's on there? Okay.
He's on there now, yeah.
Go ahead, Rick. Rick, just, did you understand the question or you want me to repeat it?
Yes. It was, it was not the city lots. The city does not own any of the lots on Inkster Road. The city does not own any of the lots on Inkster Road. What it was, was it was zoned office, so if anybody wanted to change one of those house, one of those lots to build a house, they would have to go through Planning Commission, zoning, so that's why we changed it all, RM, so that all of those could be, you know, bought, and houses can be built, condos, anything could be built there. You know, 'cause like the ones on, is it Hassan Inkster? Those have been for sale for 10, 12 years.
Yeah, for a while.
Because they would have to go through all that grief.
Rick, can you repeat for those in the audience, I know you used abbreviation, RM zoning, can you repeat what that would be?
It's just residential multifamily. So it could be a house, it could be a condo, it could be apartments, but the city does not own any of those lots that got changed.
And just to be clear, it could be multifamily as in, like, for lease type, correct?
Yes.
Not necessarily condos for sale?
No.
Does that help you, sir, as far as your question?
So, has that, has that zoning been approved?
No, so any type of zoning approval would eventually come back in front of the city council to vote on. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and then based on that recommendation, it comes to us, it comes to me specifically as a city council president, then I make a decision if it's gonna go on the agenda, usually it does, of course, and then at that particular moment, we have a discussion as a body, and then we vote on it as a body, as a city council body. If it passes, then that new zoning takes into effect.
Okay. Okay, and how do I get a copy of the minutes?
I'm sure it's online, if I'm not mistaken.
Is it zoning or planning?
It's planning, and it seems, I looked online.
Oh, it's not on yet?
They won't.
Well, no, they stopped, like, last fall.
They have to be approved first, I believe.
They, they won't, they won't be ready until they get approved at this Thursday's meeting.
This Thursday's meeting being the Planning Commission meeting, correct?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
So, this Thursday, I believe 6:00 PM here.
There's gonna be another meeting to discuss.
Not, not this, he's talking about you'd approve the minutes.
Oh, the minutes for the previous one. Got it. Okay, okay, I understand. Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience? Come on up.
My name is Christopher Nagel. I live on Campbell Street in Dearborn Heights. We're having some crime down in that area, especially around my shop, I'm a business owner there as well. We had an incident, incident last week. I tried making a report, the police gave me a hard time about making the report. I mean, this isn't the first time, they've, you know, whenever you call the police out, they come out, they treat, treat you like the criminal, you know, and I, that's, that's just ridiculous. You know, I'm, I'm a resident, I'm a business owner, and your officers come out and treat the, the public like, like dirt. You know, we're trying to stop the crime down there, we're trying to clean things up. I'm asking, I'm begging the police department, and, you know, they didn't even file the report from last week. I called them out Thursday, I made a report on Thursday, or, I'm sorry, on Friday morning, at least I thought I made the report, after speaking with the, the chief yesterday and Captain Erickson, Captain Erickson found that the report wasn't even filed. So, you know, I understand he wants to bring in a crime analyst. Well, what is a crime analyst gonna do if we don't even know the crime's happening?
Council Chair.
So.
I mean, when you, when you mentioned, I mean, somebody, police officers, I mean, I don't wanna mention names here, but if you have the names, please bring them after the meeting, I'll make sure I'll check into it.
I don't, I don't, well, actually, I do have one officer's name, but.
Police Chief, I know you're on there, do you wanna speak in regards to this? You do, okay, so. Ma'am Clerk, can you unmute the chief?
I asked him, okay, there he goes.
Go ahead, Chief.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, so Mr. Nagel knows that we didn't get this right. He and I had had a conversation, and we own this, and we do have an investigation going on as, into the circumstances of this, and this is something we have to own, and I deeply apologize to him and to the community, and we're gonna make this right with him, and we're just gonna move forward with it, and we'll be in contact with him in the next couple days.
And also, Mr. Nagel, in regards to, 'cause I know I spoke with you in regards to the request that you made.
Yes.
I can tell you, I've, I've seen firsthand myself, I was, I was gonna call you tomorrow on that, the mayor's already started looking into it between him and the director.
Yeah, I spoke to, I spoke to Mr. Conrad.
Conrad, okay.
This morning also.
Okay.
Maybe that'll help, maybe it won't, I, I don't know. I don't know, I'm, it's, I don't know what else to do, I don't know where else to go. We're, we're also having rat problems, like, like these, these people over here on Catherine Street. I'm quite, quite a ways away from them, but we've, we've been having rat problems all summer on, as well. Don't know exactly where they're coming from, I can speculate, but we've called ordinance on that also. I mean, there's just, there's a lot of, a lot of bad things going on down there.
Mr. Nagel? Mr. Nagel?
Yes, sir.
You know, we've talked, you and I have talked constantly on the phone, and I can assure you one thing, if Chief Hart says he's going to be doing something.
I'll be on it.
He'll be on it, trust me.
Well, I'm, I'm sure he will.
He will.
I had a couple of calls yesterday from, from, from the police, and.
He's a man of his word. I, I can assure you without a doubt that he'll, he'll be on this, and as far as the rats go, I don't know how we handle that, or if we, you know, what to do, but, you know, I, I'm sure you keep your business clean, and, and there's gonna be a lot of businesses that have to step up to the plate also, along that corridor, to, to make sure that everything's put away right. I've, I've said it a million times, it starts with us. You know, the residents and the homeowners, the, the businesses to keep their property up, and, you know, trash has gotta be put away in a certain way to, to stop this problem, because the rats come when there's food available. Period, end of sentence.
There is a lot of trash there, we're right at the light, a lot of people pull up to the light, they're stopped at the light, and.
They throw their trash out.
Down, and the trash goes right out the window.
Well, I, believe me, I see it, and I know it, and that's very hard to police.
I understand that.
You know, when people throw their trash out, and again, that's, that's on us, the people that, that do that stuff.
You're absolutely right.
Okay, that's on us.
But the chief will follow up with you, and Mr. Conrad and the administration's following up on that request that you made to me.
Very good.
Okay?
Chris, I believe we spoke last night as well.
Yes.
About a lighting situation in your area.
That's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, that's what we're referring to.
Okay, all right, 'cause he needs help finding out who he talks to to correct that as well.
I think we've figured out where the proper channel to go on that, and I think the request has been submitted. I'm not, not sure on that with Mr. Conrad, but he said he's gonna follow up with me on that as well.
Good.
I mean, like I said, I've seen firsthand multiple emails going back and forth between administration and directors, so they're on it.
I invite you.
But I'm warning you, it doesn't happen overnight, so just give me a heads up.
I understand. I invite you to come out and take a look.
I, I did see the pictures that you sent me, so I, I can see your concern.
Well, it was a full moon last night, so I was a little deceived.
Right, right. But either way, I do, I do see you.
What's your business? What business are you?
We're All Point Servicing, we're a detail center there. You've been out to my shop a couple years ago, we had some issues.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to make a public comment?
Council Chair.
Seeing none?
Council Chair.
Wait a minute. Not done yet.
Okay, come on up. Please let us know if you're speaking as a councilman or as a resident.
I'm speaking as a councilman and a resident.
Well, it can't be, as a councilman would be up here, so I, because I wanna distinguish it to the audience.
Some of the things are council and.
Right, right now as residents, we head out to.
As a resident, I'm, I'll be speaking on behalf of Councilman Wenzel, as a resident.
No, no, wait, 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 hold up.
Okay.
Earlier had the council announcements, right now as residents.
I'm speaking as a resident only.
Okay, so name, city, and street.
My name is Tom Wenzel. I'm a resident at Tulane Street in Dearborn Heights.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, there's, you know, a lot of comments being directed toward me lately in the last couple months, and I could, I couldn't care less about them, you know, people don't know me, and they're making comments about me, it just, they think it bothers me, it doesn't. But when it affects my family, that's a totally, totally different ballgame. Don't even go there, you know? To answer Hassan Sabs' question, questioning me, my nonprofit, Jamie's Kids, is a nonprofit set up to aid five orphaned children that me and my wife have adopted, and it's sad, and I pray for these people who continue to bash the project me and my wife are involved with, to add adequate space in our two-bedroom home. You know, it's unfortunate that these people have nothing better to do than make accusations to assassinate my character. I'm a lifelong resident of Dearborn Heights. That means I've lived here my entire life, my mailing address has never been anything other than 48125. And my passion for the Warren Valley Golf Course is not just because it's a golf course, I'm not, I don't even golf, but the golf course is a jewel in the city of Dearborn Heights. It's a rough jewel, and it needs polishing, but it's something that has been there for 99 years, longer than anyone in this room. I'm 65 years old, I'm the oldest employee, lifelong city member of any employee in Dearborn Heights. No employee in Dearborn Heights has lived in Dearborn Heights longer than I have. I, I, I sit back and I take this, and I take it with a grain of salt, but once again, accusations are made without any kind of proof, and, like I say, I don't care, but now my family's starting to hear about it, and it's getting me a little upset. I'll fight for what I believe in, because I believe what I fight for is what the residents want. I am Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience?
Council Chair.
Sir, I apologize, but you've already had your opportunity. But you know what, you went up to, when you did go up, you only went up a minute and a half. I'll give you another minute and a half. Go ahead, sir.
I just wanna piggyback on Councilman Wenzel about the golf course. I've golfed there many ti, I've golfed there many times over the years, my family has been golfing there, league golf, for over 20 years. Very upset what's happening. They're at Inkster Valley now, they can't wait to get back, so I plead with you to get things going with that golf course. It is a jewel.
We're on it.
It's a rough jewel, but they love it. It's part of my family, I enjoy visiting them afterwards, so do what you can, I appreciate it. Thank you.
We're on it. Thank you, sir. Come on up, please state if you're speaking as a resident or a councilman.
I'm speaking as a resident, since I already spoke as a councilman.
So name?
Pardon me?
Are you gonna time yourself?
Yes, I am. I got, I'm timing myself, unless you wanna do it, okay?
I, I trust, I trust you.
Fitz, you wanna do it? Ray Muscat, Havelock Street, Dearborn Heights.
Everybody's timing you, I, I don't know what that means.
But, but, matter of fact.
I have these two here.
I, I, matter of fact, I screwed us up here, and I gave myself only one minute, so I, I'm gonna reset this if you don't, mind, so I'm gonna start right now.
Time's running.
Ray, Ray Muscat, Havelock Street. You know, I, I, I'm with Mr. Wenzel on, on, on this golf course thing, I, I know it's a gem, but, you know, I've done my study into this course also, and I've been there early in the year, I was there last year when the golf course was open, and I've talked to many golfers over the years, and, you know, golfers just don't say, "We wanna go play at Warren Valley." I know, I know some scratch golfers, I mean, scratch golfers, that won't play Warren Valley because the fairways have always been horrible, and the sand traps have been horrible, they don't wanna break their clubs. But anyway, I'm not gonna say how bad the course was or is, but I can only say, as I've heard a lot of numbers being thrown out in the last one month, about 50,000 rounds of golf, up to 66,000 rounds of golf. That's a million and a half dollars. Where is the money? A million and a half dollars rounds of golf, okay, at the high end, okay? There's no money. Where did the money go for all these rounds of golf? That was on our dime, taxpayers' dime, if these, if the money is gone. I hear these numbers, okay, these are numbers are coming from somebody, and I'm not gonna say who, because I really don't know, but I hear these numbers, and that's at the high end, a million and a half dollars, and we weren't paid a lousy $60,000 a year, okay? So, you know, we as a city, yeah, we dropped the football a little bit, and I'm part of the blame, because I'm part of, part of the elected officials, that we didn't pay attention of who's paying what bill, and, and, and all of this, and, and I'm gonna take some responsibility on that myself. But when somebody claims that they didn't make any money, but yet they're throwing out numbers of 50,000 to 66,000 rounds of golf, and, and up to a million, million and a half dollars, somebody's gotta come up with something better than this, okay? Somebody's lying to someone, and I don't like being lied to, and I don't wanna lie to the residents of this city that this is all kosher. It's not. Somebody lies, somebody stole money from this city, I don't like it, and that's the way I feel about it, and that golf course, as a maintenance man that I have been, that golf course was never maintained. Ask good golfers what they think about Warren Valley for the last 50 years. When I was in high school, I just talked to a good friend of mine, he said, "Ray, for 50 years when we were in high school, we didn't wanna play Warren Valley. Go to Glenhurst on Six Mile, great little course, self-sustaining now." But that's all I have to say. Thank you very kindly, and everybody have a good evening.
Thank you. Council Chair, just to answer one of the questions or statement. We had a, a study session or a meeting or something, and they was asked how much it takes to maintain Warren Valley for one year, payroll and equipment and everything, and if, I believe the number was 1.2 million dollars to maintain the golf course, I believe that's what it was, so.
That's what the gentleman said it would take to maintain, to get the course up and running. Up and running.
No, 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 this is, this is before, this is like, a year ago or something, you know, a long time ago, and we were first talking about the golf course. This wasn't the guy that was here last meeting. This is something, the, the pay, the, the greenskeepers, the pro-shop workers, the cooks, everything for one year, it, it would cost 1.2 million dollars for salaries, equipment, materials and everything like that.
I'm, I'm not gonna get into a debate, but I hear a lot of people said they volunteered their time there, and did a lot of that work, so this is for another day, but that's what I feel, people are throwing numbers out there of how many rounds of golf were played at this golf course, and I shouldn't be saying because my time is up, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Come on up, sir. You have three minutes, name, city, and street.
My name's Mohammed Karaki from Kenlock Street, Dearborn Heights. So we've been showing up to a few of these meetings, waiting to see if we're gonna get approved or not for the food truck we wanna put on Ford and Telegraph. And we submitted all the necessary paperwork, like the permits, the, the permits, the site plan. I was gonna, I was wondering, when can we, like, find out if we're approved or not?
Okay, I do know you start, obviously, with the clerk's office, and then the Building Department. Well, Building, then they go to Clerks.
The Building Department has to approve all the plans.
Right, right, and then eventually they come to Clerk's Office, but, so what I'm trying to tell you, sir, is, the one that can better answer that would be either Building or.
Council Chair, George Anne has an answer to his question.
Hi, I work in the Clerk's Office, I was given your paperwork by someone in the Building Department, and you had to come down to us to finalize that, and you never did, so it never came to council.
To finalize what exactly?
You need a business license in order to proceed, then we bring it to council for a final approval.
So the general step, sir, is you start with the Building Department, you start with the Building Department, then you go to the Clerk's Office, then once those two have been finalized and okayed, like, you've met all the criteria, then of course, there's